Okay, we are live for our May 6th meeting of the Kingston City School District Board of Education. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Childs?
Here.
Dr. Dukowicz?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Ms. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
Here.
Ms. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Spicer?
Here.
We're all present. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will hear at least. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, I admire these concerts that they have on Teams and Zoom.
Yeah, but they can't synchronize.
All synchronized. We have two resolutions coming out of executive session. Resolution 2019 BoE 67, be resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to execute a memorandum of agreement between the district and the Kingston CSEA dated May 7, 2020, as presented to the Board at this meeting, regarding additional benefits paid for food service employees and maintenance slash custodial employees during the COVID-19 crisis, and appropriates the monies therefore. Copy of such memorandum of agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this agreement. Do I have a motion?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, and abstentions? So the resolution passes eight to one. Resolution 2019 BoE 68, be resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to execute a memorandum of agreement between the district and the Kingston Educational Supports Professionals dated May 7, 2020, as presented to the Board at this meeting, regarding adding the job title of family worker bilingual to the recognition clause, and establishing the salary for such position, and appropriates the monies therefore. A copy of such memorandum of agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting. Do I have a motion?
Double.
Reverend Childs, the second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Who's seconded?
Nora. It's not me.
Okay. So it was moved by Reverend Childs, seconded by Nora here. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Unanimously adopted. So this meeting is being conducted under BOE, Resolution BoE 58, which was approved in two meetings ago. The Board of Education provisions of policies 1230, 2310, 2320, and 2342 regarding public attendance at meetings, video conferencing, and public participations have been suspended for the duration of the New York State COVID-19 state of emergency. So there's no public comment. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of April 22, 2020. Can I have a res, can I have a motion for that resolution?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Spicer and Mr. Michael, any corrections or changes or additions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Adopted unanimously. Superintendent's report. Update on school closings. Dr. Pedalino.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. So just a brief update on the, again, we've, most of what I update, you read in the newspaper, or see on the news, or watch on our governor's daily press conference, so, but just to give you some quick updates from here. Obviously, you all know, our closures have been extended for the rest of the school year. A lot of questions around about summer school. What will happen? Is there going to be summer school? We, the governor said last week, when he closed schools for the rest of the year, that he would be making a decision around summer school by May 15, so we're awaiting that. You know, and again, we're preparing, just like we had for the closure, we're preparing to have summer school traditionally. We're also preparing what we're going to do as far as summer school if we have to go to a digital format. So we are working on that, and those plans are being, you know, kind of put together as we speak. Our continuity of learning plan had to be resubmitted to the state last week. That was done, and we are waiting any feedback on that. As we have received to this point, but I thought it was teaching and learning team put together a very cohesive and well-thought-out plan. Made some additions to that plan for this submission, and I think they, we have a solid plan, and hopefully it will be accepted and we'll move forward. Far as, oh, I'm sorry, to go along with the continuity of learning plan, we are putting together also a survey for our parents and our students and our teachers to kind of get feedback on what is working, what is not, how are they feeling about where, how things are going. Obviously, we're going to be in this for a little while longer, and we want to be able to get some feedback from parents, from students, from teachers, on what are the things that maybe we can do a little different, a little better, what's working, what's not. So we're, while we're constantly having conversations with people about that, we thought maybe reach out, and I know just from emails that I receive, and I'm sure board members receive, and I know other administrators receive, you know, I get five or six emails from parents who are very pleased and find certain things very easy. I get emails from parents who say things are very difficult. So we want to hear more specifics about that, so we're going to work with K-12 Insight, who does our, who does our DTSDE survey, and as they're, they're creating a survey for us to take a look at how we're doing with online learning. And, you know, this is not going to just inform what we're doing for the rest of the year, but I think it'll inform what we go, when we go into the future, as we use online settings for other online programs, things for other uses in the district, whether they be on distance learning, or for students who are home on medical, or, or, you know, we may be in a situation in the fall that even if we're back, we may end up in a, in an open-close, open-close kind of situation as this, as the virus kind of, whether it comes back or just is on its way out. So we want to be ready and know what's working and what's not, and be able to work with our families, our students, and our teachers. So we're putting a survey together on that.
Just a question, a question on that. Is that going to be an online survey?
I'm sorry, let's do it again.
Is that an online survey?
Yes, we'll send that survey link out like we do with the, with the DTSDE survey, same one.
Okay.
Food service, we've talked about food service. To date, we've served approximately 30,000 meals. We distributed 30,000 meals to students, but with the extension of the closure, we are taking another look. We're actually meeting Friday to, with our food service people to talk about. Now, we're not talking about two weeks, four weeks, six weeks. We're talking about the rest of the year and possibly into the summer. So we think we need a new plan. We've got some other ideas of how we can expand this. Obviously, we've been working with some of our community groups, we've worked with the city, we've worked with the county, and they've been great partners. But I think this is going to, this is, you know, I think more is going to be expected and going to need to be done, really, looking at the length of this closure. So we are, again, meeting to see what we can do, and also take a look in the view of what we're doing. We have our nine locations, and we have the 600 meals, or the 1,200 meals that we provide to the collaborative, but they, but the six, we got, we like to look. Mahar, for example, we started out pretty strong, serving about 45 meals a day here, and 90 meals a day here, really. And yesterday and today and last week, we were down into the single digits. I think Monday of this week, we serve no meals here. So maybe this isn't the right location. Maybe we need to find a different location and use our resources in that way. So we're going to evaluate, and we're going to adjust, and we're going to improve, just like we try to do with anything that we're, that we're doing. Reopening, a lot of talk about what are we going to do about reopening. We have, we're forming a committee to talk about how, how we're going to, what's it going to look like. Again, we want to include people like Dr. Woodley, people like our security people, board members, we would like to have involved. And we're going to try to get that group together and get started next week to start having some preliminary conversations. Obviously, a lot to think about. Met with Mr. Verge and Mr., and Mr. Silverstein earlier in the week with about a list of items that we, that we feel that we need, that our nurses have requested, that we probably need to start up in September, masks, thermometers, hand sanitizer, et cetera. So we're, we're working on that. We're reviewing the CDC's newest document and hoping for a little more guidance from the State Education Department. But we want to get a group together, we want to get ready, and if and when we come back to school, we want to be ready to go and have everything we need. Lastly, on this topic, graduation, big conversation with everyone is what are we doing for graduation? Our first committee met, our first committee meeting for graduation was today. It was very well attended. Mr. Lamb attended for the Board. We had a couple of parents on there, met several students, six or seven students, and some administrators and a few teachers. So I thought we were, excuse me, a good representation of people who are involved in this. So the, the decision was made that the students were going to assist us in creating a survey that we would send out to seniors, and give them a list of some possible ideas, and see who, see which ones that they thought were something that they were most interested in doing. Lot of, lot of interesting feedback from students. I think it was a little different than we expected, some of the things they said. So we are hopeful to get all that information. We'll put that, we're going to put that survey out Monday. We're going to let it ride for a week, and we'll, on Monday of the following week, we're going to put it all together and make some decisions around what we think would be, what the students really want to see us do, and again, what they want to see us do and what we can do. We have to, we have to balance that, because there's, there could be some disconnect there, but we'll make sure the survey is reflective of that. I've given the committee chair, who at this point is chairs, Mr. DeCicco and Ms. Bonville, till the 22nd to bring us a plan. So we're expecting to have a plan by May 22nd of what we're going to do, and then we can start preparing to implement it.
Dr. Pedalino?
Yes.
One of the things, of course, we do is the award assembly, and the community gives out the scholarships. I've gotten a lot of scholarship, a lot of applications, but I don't know what, how's that going to work out? What are we going to do?
I will follow up. Mr. DeCicco is supposed to put a plan in place, and may have a plan in place that just hasn't executed yet. I will follow up with him tomorrow and get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Pedalino, I'd like to say that the fourth quarter grading came out, and the final grade, the plan for the final grade and the fourth quarter grading came out a week ago or so. And I just want to commend the committee. I think you did a great job in balancing kind of the need to motivate students and keep kids engaged, but also not punish kids for not being able to connect. And I thought you really did a very good job of meeting both of those things. And I'm pretty proud of the Kingston District for not going just pass fail, and that we won't be failing kids just because of this pandemic.
Thank you. I think there was a lot of work went on in that, and I think we took a lot of different ideas from a lot of people and put them, put them, kind of put them together, took the good parts and covered the parts we didn't like, and then added some of our own things. But yeah, it was, it was good work by our teaching and learning, our teaching and learning team. You know, and just so people also know, and I know some people will think this is a good thing, some people think it's not, but we did send out a message today, several things with the message, but one of the things we did say is we are not going to have honor roll for third marking period. That's, you know, I think, while I now understand that some, some parents may, even some students might be disappointed by that, we didn't feel that that's where our energies needed to be at this time. So we're not going to have an honor roll for the third marking period. And, you know, when we return to normal, we'll return to normal, but for right now, that's, that was the direction we decided to go.
That's great. I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I thought that fourth quarter grading, that was really very excellent. It was easy to understand as one read through it. It made a lot of sense. Can I make some comments about reopening?
Please.
So I listened this afternoon to a MIT town hall on reopening, and about 20 faculty members that discussed the reopening there. The situation that they're facing is the same as situations that universities and schools all over the country are facing. Their primary comment was masks, that they're very effective. There was a physician who works at Brigham and Young Hospital in Boston, has 780 beds. He said there's only two, they've had the PPE, staff have worn masks, and there's only been two cases of in-hospital transmission to staff, two definitive cases that have occurred from in-hospital transmission with the mask. So it's been very effective. They also mentioned temperature checks, testing. There, there's a good possibility that there will be, by September, there will be tests available that will be a cheek swab and insert into a test tube, and it'll be color, changes color or not to indicate infection. Social distancing will be important. They also mentioned how they don't have a, they don't have an answer to this, but what do you do with vulnerable faculty and students? How do you, how do you work them into the reopening? And then mental health issues, that there may be more pronounced mental health issues that have to be dealt with than normal. And so just as, as our team focuses on reopening, if they can make sure they consider those aspects.
And then, as I said, you know, Mr. Silverstein has already sent in his order for masks and temperature checks. So those are things that we already have, again, with the, in collaboration with our nursing staff. We already have, we're ready, we're pricing it out. And again, you know, we're in one of those places where we're hopefully not going to play this competitive game that we, that we saw for PPE at the beginning of this crisis. So we're, we've been pretty lucky to be able to get masks both purchased and given to us from the county. But yeah, moving forward, I think looking at things like hand sanitizer, masks, quick read thermometers are going to be in high demand. So we're working towards that. I do know that the BOCs is also going to work with us to support, help us provide some of those items. They've already said they have hand sanitizer that they're going to distribute to the school district, some of those kind of things. So we have a lot of partners in this.
I think the state, the state is producing hand sanitizer that will be available to government agencies. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on, on the school closures?
Dr. Pedalino, are you sensing or getting any information from, from the state as to what metric or measurement they're planning on using to decide whether we're going to reopen or not? Is that, is that known yet?
Nothing more than what the governor has said in a couple of his press conferences. He has his, he has his tiers and those kind of things. You know, I, I think that looking at, you know, are we looking at a significant period with declining infection and those kind of things is really what they're looking at. You know, so I think it's, it's a while before we get from, I mean, I think if you look at that whole chart, we're not, we're not even in phase one yet. So it'll be a while to get to phase one. And again, now, at one point, we thought schools would be one of the first things to open. Now it seems they've moved that to schools will be one of the last things that will open. So it's a changing, it's a changing, you know, we look for a specific metric, but it's changing all the time.
Thank you.
Pedalino?
Yes, Mr. Michael.
I'm going to talk about the budget.
That's what I'm going to next.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay. So there is a PowerPoint in your packet, and we're going to put it up on the screen here so you can see it as well. So we have, obviously, in the midst of all this, the, one of the things that we did, and probably should have been the school closures notification or conversations, it has been determined that the vote date will be June 9, 2020, on our school district budget. So with that condensed timeline, we've been working very hard to, you know, formulate a budget and to get all the necessary legal requirements under the new law out there, or the new executive order, I should say. So just some quick new information, budget to vote, date has been changed. All votes will be cast via absentee ballot. District will provide the ballots and the return envelopes with postage paid to all registered voters. And we must be received, now, there's one thing we just, actually, Camille got this for us tonight, was they must be received by June 9. We now are getting guidance that it's by 5 o'clock June 9. I want to get that, I'd like to see that more officially, but that's what we're hearing right now. And the board elections, there are no petitions necessary for candidates. They just need to contact the clerk of the board, fill out the paperwork, and they will be placed on the ballot. So, you know, just kind of going backwards to how we used to talk, talk about our budget goals. And the budget goal is, for me, every year since I've been here, I think you're all, per me, say this, is to balance the needs of our students with our community's values and their ability to pay. Both the, all three of those things have changed dramatically. Our students' needs are changing and have changed. Our community's values are changing in some ways, and their ability to pay is definitely changing. So we're seeing a lot of change, even though that goal remains the same. It means something different. So our goals for 2021 are to maintain student programs, to avoid layoffs, and to keep our people employed, to remain at or below the tax levy limit. And one of the things that we don't usually see is to ensure this, the future of the Kingston City School District, which is a tremendous concern, looking, we don't know when this is going to end, or the impact this is going to have on us long-term. What can we do? How can we develop a budget that is not going to endanger all of the progress that made, and things we are able to offer our students in the future? Our budget challenges, I really didn't have enough paper for this, but just wanted to list some of the high points. Reduction in state aid due to the COVID-19 crisis is a challenge. One of the biggest challenges is unsure and unpredictable state aid. We don't know what our state aid is. We don't know what the look backs, if you're familiar with the term look back, what the governor is doing with his team is looking back at revenues each quarter and determining how much of that money that comes in can be allocated to all different things within the budget, but for our purposes, to schools. So we won't know that, we don't know that now. We won't know that next quarter. We won't know that throughout the year. So it's a concern to put, it's difficult to put together a budget, but it's also a concern to present a budget to our community that actually is going to be changing throughout the year. The budget may not change, but the programs and things that we are putting in place, or that we're telling our community we're putting in place with this, with this budget, may not actually be the programs and things that we have for our students based on what we received in aid. So it is an interesting exercise. I keep saying it's like trying to play darts in a dart room. You don't know where the dart board is, but you just keep throwing the dart and hope to hit it. So we have no, we have no commitment of federal relief at this point, and I don't know if we ever will, or how that, and if we do, if that would be significant or enough for us to move forward as we would have in a regular year. The continued increase with our student increase in costs for our students with disabilities, that's non-COVID related. That's something we see, we've seen growing over the last few years, continues to be a budget challenge. One of the things that we're not really that used to is the budget being as tight as this budget is going to be. We've been able to make some adjustments mid-year if we have additional expenses for this, or if there's a special program that we wanted to get our students involved in, or special trainings we wanted for our teachers. We've been able to be flexible and find a way to do those things. That is not going to be the case this year. We're going to establish a budget. We're going to adopt a budget, and we are going to stick to making sure that we, you know, spend only the dollars that are in that budget. No new programs will be brought forward. No new initiatives will be accepted. No money other than where we are, what we're, what we're committing to spend will be spent. And in reality, it will probably be less than that. It's hard for me to believe that our revenues in New York State are going to come to the 90% marker that the governor has put out there for them to give us the full amount of aid of any, of any quarter in the next year. So I think when I say we're going, the budget's going to be tight, I mean, it's going to be tight. And I think, you know, working with the business office, you can see their concern around making sure we have to stick to every part of it. Unexpected expenses are going to be a problem. A challenge in some ways, not so much a challenge now, but a challenge into the future. This year, we'll be requesting, or really, yeah, requesting or recommending a significant allocation of fund balance to balance our budget. As you know, we had about, we had a $3.5 million hole last time we spoke. We've managed to get that to about $2 million. And as of now, with the timeline that we have, we think it's time, we have to, obviously, we'll have another week or so before we ask the Board to officially adopt this budget. But I think we figured it's time, with, with the compressed timeline, we have to make a decision, balance the budget. And in order to that, we are recommending that we allocate another $2 million in fund balance into the, into the budget. Currently, we've put in $2 million, so that would be a total of $4 million in fund balance put into the budget to balance this budget for 2021. And last thing, that is a challenge, I think it's not so much a challenge in budget development, but a challenge in overall, you know, the spirit of the vote and the, on the budget. This short timeline did not allow us to communicate with our, with our community about our budget. And you all know, that's one of the things that we've tried to do. Every year I've been here, we've tried to make sure we've communicated the budget, whether it be through our traditional source, our ways through our website and our text blast, me going out to meet with certain groups, our budget forums, hearing from our community what's important to them, working with our principals, working with our, with our teachers, to see what their inputs are in this. We're not able to do that this year. It doesn't, it isn't working that way. So that's, that's a difficulty. And I think, given the manner in which this, this budget is going to be voted, I think there's a lot of people who are, you know, to get to the 33,000 registered voters, the information that we want, and any of them aren't even interested in what's going on in schools for the most part, is, is difficult to do. And I think it's just, it just adds to the challenges. One thing I didn't put on here, but I do want to talk about is the, the logistics of this are a challenge. And I think it's been well documented, you're hearing it from everyone. Materials, you know, obtaining materials and timing, envelopes, printing, all those things that we have to do to get this vote to happen, you know, being concerned with the potential for fraud, considering the fact that we don't have, we don't have the election inspectors from the board of elections. We're going to be deputizing our own employees to do, to count 33, possibly 33,000 paper ballots. Also, looking at things like, we're being told we have to send out ballots to all qualified voters. And we're still unsure that the definition of qualified voter, we are, we are taking that as the definition of registered voter, but there are people in our community who are qualified to vote, who are not registered to vote. What does that mean to us, and how do we miss that? So we have, we have some concerns around those and many other things, and I recently listed that out for all of you, so I won't spend a lot of time talking about that. But the other piece, an unintended consequence maybe of this is, our annual budget vote in board elections costs about $13,000 for us to run. That's with our nine polling places and our poll, our poll workers, and then our election inspectors to count the election. This year, our, this budget, under this circumstances, are going to, this is going to cost us $100,000. So 10 times, almost 10 times the amount that it costs us to run So 10 times, almost 10 times the amount that it costs us to run the regular election, it will cost us to run this election because we are responsible for the postage to and from, we are responsible for the budget count, we are the counting of the ballots, we're responsible for the stuffing of the envelopes, all of those things cost us time and money. So we're looking at the cost of, and I think I'm being conservative right now, actually saying that the cost is going to be $100,000.
Dr. Padalino?
Yes, Mr. Spicer.
The anticipated cost for running the election is kind of known statewide. Are we anticipating any type of support from the state to help us with this?
There's been no indication that there will be any support from the state to help us with this.
I would be very unlikable.
What is that?
I would not expect anything as a state aid for the election.
No.
I don't expect it.
I don't expect anything.
So as you see next, the next slide, this is the usual cover page that you're used to, showing our appropriations, our estimated revenues at this point, and it says that estimated revenues at this point. Now, this still shows, with a tax levy limit of 1.73, this still shows our gap between a balanced budget and where we are right now, and that gap is obviously just that little bit over $2 million, and that is the gap that I am proposing, we are recommending that we fill with fund balance, barring any change between now and next week, when we're supposedly going to hear about look backs, but I'm not sure and I can't be confident in that. So again, given our timelines, I think there's a decision we need to make, and we've decided this is the way to go, and it has the best impact, hopefully, on what we can do for students and our teachers and our community. So yeah, that $2,9672 is what I'm going to recommend we allocate a fund balance, again, that will bring our total fund balance appropriations to $4 million for next year, which is much higher than we usually do, but I think it's a rainy day fund, and it's raining. So this is why we're making that recommendation at this time.
Dr. Padalino, are we, are we asking the District Teachers Union to contribute anything, or?
We have not asked any of the bargaining units to suspend and/or renegotiate their contracts at this time now. Lastly, under budget highlights, there are, I mean, there are some highlights to this. This budget maintains all student programs, our academic programs, our extracurricular programs, athletics, arts, music, our college courses, our AP classes. It continues our commitment to smaller class sizes, which I know is important to this board, which is 22 or fewer in K through 2. It keeps our commitment to technology, and again, one of the things we really learned this, during this crisis, was our commitment to technology was well, that was money well spent. We did, we were ready with the platform, we were ready with the programs, we were ready with the infrastructure, we weren't quite as ready with the hardware as we would like to be. We're going to work towards that, and you probably all remember, we bought about $500,000 more equipment with a board resolution last a few weeks ago, and we're going to continue that span to move to that one-to-one program where student, all students have some device, whether it's a Chromebook, well, it'll probably be a Chromebook. So that we, when this happens, these type of things happen in the future, we're not only ready with our infrastructure, we're ready with the hardware. It maintains our pre-K program that we started this year, and it also maintains our dual language program and the expansion of our dual language program into our elementary schools. So we have, you know, again, able to keep something that we added this year. All of our social, emotional learning, our mental health and wellness, and restorative practices, all those, all those trainings, all that work remains. We will stay at the tax levy limit at 1.73, and I think something that's very important in this time, knowing the number of people who are at, you know, at the unemployment line, we don't want to add to that, we want our people working here in with our students, so there's no layoffs to our faculty or staff through this budget. Any questions?
Dr. Padalino?
Dr. Padalino, I know that we had access to smart money that was, that we could use for technology, and I think you could even use it for pre-K, and I'm wondering, I don't think we had used all of ours, I'm wondering if there's a plan to dip into that?
We have not, yes, there's, and actually, Mr. Tomcik and Mr. Olson and Mr. Verge and I have talked about this several times this year, that we do have a plan in place that's kind of a phased-in plan. It can, it can't be used for pre-K, it can only be used for building pre-K classrooms.
Okay.
So that's a little different, you know, that's just so there's an understanding around that. But we have a multi kind of tiered approach between technology and security, because those are the real high points of that, of that program, and I know one of the things that, that Mr. Tomcik and Mr. Olson and Mr. Verge and myself all agree upon is, we don't want to spend that money on necessarily hardware that's going to be no good to us in a year and a half, we really want to use that money on infrastructure to make sure we have the, you know, we have the bandwidth, we have everything to deliver, we can use it, we can use our, you know, our great purchasing agreements that we have around technology for that, and use this money for more, for larger things like infrastructure. So we've got several things in the plan there, as you all know, there's a very specific way to obtain those funds, so we, it is in our, it is in our technology plan, and we're going to kind of phase that in.
Dr. Padalino, in terms of the emotional and social learning and mental health needs that we can anticipate are going to be greater than they have ever been, is there any thought to looking closely at the pro, I think the training we've done is still appropriate, but in terms of the programs that we have been using in the past, are, is anybody looking at them to see if those are still what's appropriate, or if we need more people in the schools, like social workers, psychologists, to deal with the real needs?
Yeah.
Or are there other programs that we have in the schools that perhaps we can trade off for some mental health?
Yeah. I think many of the, like, the outside programs that we have coming in are duly funded between our budget and some, and some grant money and those kind of things. You know, unfortunately, you know, and this is just the truth, and I hate to say things like this, but it's true, we are not going to have the money to bring in the mental health, additional mental health supports, I think that will probably be needed when our students come back. We've made a significant commitment in our school psychologists, our social workers, our, you know, our guidance counselors, our, you know, just now to our bilingual family workers who support our students and families, and we've made that commitment several years ago to make sure that we were a little bit ahead of the game. So we're in good shape there. I mean, are we in good shape for what's going to happen after this pandemic? I mean, I can't say we're not, but I can't guarantee that we are, but what I can say is, you know, we are going to need partners, we are going to need help from the community, we're going to need federal, state grant money, whatever we can do to shore up that, because it's not going to come out of our general fund, it's just, we're not going to have it.
Well, one of the things that perhaps can be looked into is we do have community partners that, I know the distance, the telemedicine has helped in people keeping their appointments, maybe we can hook up with some of the agencies that provide that for children and young adults, because they're finding that since transportation is not an issue, there's actually a higher level of people keeping those appointments. I'm just wondering if there's some partners in the community that we could utilize?
Yeah, and we do have our partnership with Astra with their clinics, in school building clinics.
Right.
Those are positive, but again, I think they're not, we're not equipped.
With distancing, social distancing, we wouldn't want to put more people in the building, but we could, we, I don't want it to be ruled out, because I think we could do that with the help of technology. I just hope that that's being looked at.
Dr. Padalino?
Yes, Mr. Spicer.
I'd like to thank you, first of all, the team really created a miracle as far as I'm concerned, because I thought we'd have to ask for concessions, I thought we'd have to cut program, and if we can, if we can maintain this as tight as it is, you've gone far beyond where I thought we would be at this point, I have to support what you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I'm really pleased to see a budget that keeps the programs and doesn't lay off staff, and we've worked hard to put some special things into place around the pre-K and the dual language, and all of our wonderful programs, and our SCL programs, and the short of justice night. I'm so pleased that we don't have to cut. I'm, I'm wondering what a $4 million fund balance investment does to us and where that leaves us in the future.
Well, the $4 million fund balance allocation does not hurt us this year, you know. Obviously, we have our, we have our reserves, we have our fund balance, and it's, and as I said, it's there for a reason, and that reason is when there's a crisis, and there's a crisis. Really, our concern, next year at this time, we're going to be having a similar conversation, because now we've artificially, basically artificially inflated our revenues. So if we artificially inflate our revenues, next year, those, we're, we have to look at either, we have to continue to artificially raise those revenues, get more funding, get more revenues from the state or other resources, or cut our appropriations to eliminate the need for that, you know, false inflation of revenues. I mean, we have a, you saw, we have a, what, a hundred and, almost $190 million budget, a $4 million budget, you know, fund balance allocation, you know, is not, is not a massive influx, I mean, but it is, it is difficult to overcome the following year. But again, these are the things, these are the kind of choices I think you make when we're in a situation that we're in, and we work toward next year's budget carefully, being very prudent with how we're spending our money this year, looking carefully at efficiencies that could happen as we go through this year to start developing the 2021, 2022 budget, I mean, basically on June 9th, June 10th.
I'm also hoping that the community, I think the community recognizes in this time how flexible you're going to have to be, and I don't really foresee them having a problem with changes you might have to make, as long as they are aware that you're being as transparent as you can, and that whatever changes come, it's because of this emergency situation. So I don't have the worries that you voiced before, I think that you've done a great job, and as long as we remain transparent and we try to meet everybody's needs, I think the community understands that we're all going through something we could not have And we still don't what's out there, so.
Dr. Padalino, and I can say this, he sent it to Governor Pomod saying today that he's expecting $15 billion shortfall this year, I'm assuming next year will be more dire straits, so it is something we should be ready for, and the media should understand that we'll be in a more difficult situation for the next coming school year. So let's hope though, things will be better.
Any other questions on the budget?
No questions, Dr. Padalino. I don't have a question, but I do comment that I think you guys have done a great job, and I often think that a lot of this, again, we've been sort of positioned to be able to weather this storm based upon decisions that was made several years back, you know, the closing of schools and the set to all of that helped with this fund balance, and enabled us to be able to be in good stead right now. So we appreciate the work that you've done, and I think this board has been a tremendous asset to the community too, and have worked to make education in our community the best it can be, and to manage things well, and so, kudos for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Tomcik.
I think that we, I think we can weather one year with the additional use of fund balance. If we have to go to a second year, it'll be more problematic. And also, voters need to realize that what, so what voters are going to be voting on are the level of appropriations. They're not going to be voting on the tax levy, they're going to be voting on the appropriations, so that's what our constraint is. And as we go along, and if our state revenue is reduced in the months on a quarterly basis going forward, that's going to be very problematic.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to thank Dr. Padalino and his staff, I know they've been working very diligently on trying to create a budget when they don't really know what the revenues are going to be. And I would like to echo what Reverend Child said, they have had very competent stewardship of the district and have really managed our resources well, and by closing schools and actually making sure that we did have the fund balances that we do. And so it will be difficult, we don't know what next year and the year after will bring, except that it's going to be a rough ride, and I think as long as we're honest and transparent with the community, they're going to understand they're in this with us, you know.
And I also wanted to add my gratitude for the outstanding work that Dr. Padalino and his team did in putting together the budget. If we can come, if we can bring the district through this crisis with this budget, we'll be in a good place to deal with the crisis that we know is coming. We know this isn't over, but this budget is a sure way to put us on a good standing for what's about to come. Just outstanding work, outstanding work.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer. That concludes the superintendents. Good work.
Thank you. We'll move on to Board of Education. We have some birth, May is our birthday month. So we have, I think there are five birthdays?
Yes.
In May? And Mrs. Shear is holding up a big birthday card. Don't have cookies to hand out to you.
No cookies, virtual cookies, virtual.
But wish everybody a happy birthday, for sure, and. We have a resolution that I believe that Mrs. Shear would like to make.
Thank you.
BoE 70.
Yes, Resolution BoE 70, dated today, May 6, 2020. Whereas, May 4th through 8th of 2020 has officially been designated Teacher Appreciation Week, and whereas we were unable to recognize our teachers in the customary fashion on May 5th, Teacher Appreciation Day because of the COVID-19 pandemic and result in school closures, and whereas the teachers in the Kingston City School District have stepped up to facilitate instruction for their pupils in new and different ways, and have had to deliver lessons under very challenging circumstances, and from a safe distance, have had to remotely provide quality education, feedback, and encouragement for all of their students, have had to reach out to those students who may have experienced difficulty accessing materials, and have provided office hours in addition to instruction for students to get extra help. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Education of the Kingston City School District wishes to extend our deep appreciation and profound thanks to the teachers of the Kingston City School District for their dedication to their pupils and their efforts to continue to inspire and comfort their charges in these difficult days. Thank you for the impromptu concerts, the neighborhood parades, the volunteerism at local food pantries, and most of all, for your profound, unmitigated professionalism in this, I'm sorry, unprecedented time. It has been said that teaching is 90% encouragement. has been said that teaching is 90% encouragement. So thank you for providing that encouragement for your students, for their parents, and for the members of this Board of Education. Together, we'll weather this storm. And I'd like to move that resolution.
Second.
So we have a, we have a second and a third, probably, maybe a fourth and a fifth. But we'll take, we'll take a vote and we'll see. All in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Abstentions? So it is unanimously adopted.
That was beautiful, Nora. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for composing that.
I know, but that was beautifully written.
And all your parents who've been conscripted to be teachers in this time. Thank you, thank you.
And I'd like to request that we send this out via email to all of our staff, all of our teachers.
Yeah.
To let them know individually that we appreciate their efforts and service.
I think that would be lovely.
While I could not agree with Mrs. Shear more, I'm just glad that she read that. It's also, just to add to, today is National Nurses' Day. And while we're not a hospital, we have nurses who work here, who are dedicated to our students, who have been great resources for us during this crisis, and many of them have been great resources to our community, working in the hospitals when they weren't here. So that's, we appreciate their work. We appreciate their help. I think I mentioned earlier in my report, you know, the nurses helped us put together what we're going to need for when we're going to be reopening. So we're appreciative of the work that they do here in the Kingston City School District. And we are glad that they are with us.
Yes, thank you. Policy Committee, Mrs. Jordan?
Thank you. The Policy Committee met Friday, May 1st. And the people present were Mr. Spicer, Mr. Shaughnessy, Mr. Lamb, Dr. Padalino, Mr. Olson, Mr. Verge, and myself. We had a virtual Teams meeting. And the first thing that I want to bring to your attention is on our agenda, we had a conversation about student attendance policy 5100. We were advised by our attorney that we should probably change it for the duration of the crisis due to COVID-19. So we do have a, something to move here where it says, a resolution be resolved that the Board of Education hereby suspends the portion of policy 5100 student attendance entitled "Course Completion and Awarding of Credit" on page three of such until the state of emergency no longer exists in New York State due to COVID-19. And that is second.
So a second? Mrs. Shear, did you raise your hand?
Second, yes.
Any discussion? So we're not changing this policy. We're just suspending the implementation of that particular section.
Right.
So normally, when we have a policy change, it's a first reading and a second reading. But in this instance, we are just going to vote on it this evening, and it will go into effect immediately.
I would like to add that it's still very important that especially the secondary level students check in with their teachers online, you know, even though the attendance policy is being suspended, it's still very important for them to be present for lessons and to complete assignments.
And that is why we did not suspend the entire attendance policy, Mrs. Shear. That was exactly why. This is just impossible to
No, I understand.
Please. So that's why this part is being suspended. But the rest of the policy stands, and teachers are still, would be expected to meet with their students. And if their students aren't able to connect, there are things in place to make sure that somebody follows up with them. So that will continue.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Say nay. Adopted unanimously?
Okay, we had a lot of other discussion. Our, the other policy for review was 5340, which is Educational Community Standard of Dress. We had approached this policy a couple of months back. And unfortunately, the students didn't have the time because of the sudden exit. They didn't have the time to give us the recommendations we had hoped. So we are going to suspend discussion on that until either the Jefferson Committee or the student government can be together to have those discussions. But we're still going to ask them to consider the same kind of goals that we have for safety, for making sure that we have more of a restorative philosophy in that dress code, and appropriate dress, no gender or body size bias, those kinds of things that we'd like them to take into consideration. So we'll hand that back to them when school's back in session. We had more very thoughtful discussion around the therapy or service animals in the schools. We had to consider the law, the insurance requirements, liability, and safety. So we reviewed a couple of existing policies from a couple of different districts. But NISP in fact does not have a policy that they recommend. So we are, Mr. Verge, after our intense discussion, we kind of all agreed that perhaps policies regarding therapy dogs, classroom pets, and also, there's an existing policy addressing use of live animals or, you know, like chicks and that kind of thing, along with dissection. So we're going to try to incorporate everything into an animal policy and then have subsets of that that relate to what is specified. And we'll give that to you for a first reading for the next, after our next policy meeting. We will also be giving you, after we have fleshed it out and we put Mr. Verge on that as well, we're looking into language-changing, travel conference attendance, and expense reimbursement, along with field trips and excursions. Because of this crisis, we were caught in a dilemma of having kids who had already been approved for trips or were asking for approval for trips. And we weren't able to necessarily give that approval because of the impending crisis, which turned out to be a real crisis. And so we are looking to extend the time that people have to request board approval. And we are also going to be asking for parents to submit some kind of documentation that indicates that they have some insurance in case the board has to rescind that permission for any reason. So we're looking into that. And we will give the board first reading as soon as we're completed with that discussion. I want to thank the people at Policy. They're so thoughtful. They really, really try so hard to make the intent of the policy be clear and something that we can use that's useful. And Mr. Olson researched the insurance concerns for some of these policies. And Mr. Verge always is offering to rewrite things for us and give them to the attorney. And Mr. Perna, I mean, you organize everything. You just assist us in so many ways. And also, Mrs. Bowers, I want to give a shout out to her because she always gives us some feedback before meetings. So thank you all. Dr. Padalino always is a voice of reason, and I appreciate that. So that's our report.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to add, too, that that last policy meeting was thick with consequential and technical policy considerations. And I think Sue did a great job of shepherding us all through the vital points of each. And I just wanted to thank her as well.
My thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I will say that I think all of our board committee meetings are of consequential content and very well done. And I think that's one of the reasons that we can function successfully as a board, is the work that's done in committees. And we'll next hear from the Audit and Finance Committee. Mr. Michael?
Yes, Mrs. Shaughnessy, thank you. The Audit and Finance Committee met last Tuesday. We also had a virtual meeting through the Microsoft Teams program. And I have couple of interested notes. But first, I want to say that we had a short discussion of the budget. But I would like to thank and commend Dr. Padalino and the Business Office, Mr. Olson, Mrs. Goodard, Mrs. Grushet. They worked so hard and be resilient and creative to finalize the budget. It was a little hairful, but they did it. Thank you again. And the committee accepted the treasurers and claims of these reports and also the fund reports from the month of March. And I would like to pass, I would like to ask the board to pass the two resolutions regarding those reports, BoE 64 and BoE 65. Would you please, somebody make a motion?
Second.
Second.
So it's been moved and second. Are there any questions about either of those reports? All in favor of accepting those reports, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Say nay. Abstentions? Unanimously adopted. Thank you. Your next meeting is on when?
I'm not that, Mr., I have another pleasant report. Okay?
I'm sorry, what's that?
He's not talking.
Oh, you're not that, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay. The taxpayers will be happy to hear that starting September, you'll be able to accept online school tax payments through a credit card or debit card. And evidently will be some minimal charge for the processing fees that is done through a third-party vendor. So starting September, you don't have to go to a hard school to make your payments. No more traffic congestion. You can do it online. So that's all I have to report, Mr. Shaughnessy.
Okay. I apologize for trying to cut you short there. On the online tax payments, I think that you'll be able to use a credit card.
Or debit card.
Or debit card. But if you do a, or you'll be able to have it done automatically debited from your bank account. And I believe if you use that method, there's a lower fee for it.
Dollar ninety-five.
It's a, you know, if you use a credit card, there's a more substantial fee. So we'll have to make sure that people are aware of that option when it comes time to publicize that. And that'll be documented in the, hopefully, in the tax bills that go out in
Will be a smaller fee if you use your checking account through a debit card. I believe it will be dollar ninety-five charge. And if you use your credit cards, it'll be like three dollars. It's not the money we collect. It's going through the third-party vendor.
Right.
So it's worth the convenience. That's all I can say.
If you use your credit card, you'll get points or whatever.
Nobody would like to fly today, so I don't know if they would need the point.
Miles, yeah.
I heard today that traffic at Albany Airport is down 95%.
Which one? Wait, what?
Albany Airport, traffic is down 95% from their usual volume. Amazing. Do we need, in light of the new budget vote, do we need, what is the adoption date that we need for the Board of Education to adopt the budget?
So what I was going to ask the board to consider, technically, the adoption date would be on our, the 21st, which we would do at our 20th meeting. Our concern is the magnitude of this process between the getting the ballots, getting the ballots out, the mailing process, all those things, the printing of the ballots, making sure we do that. And, you know, under the order, they're supposed to be in the hands of our voters by the 26th of May. So to make that happen, we would, I would like the board to consider a special meeting next week. Now, I originally thought it would be on Wednesday, but I'm hearing, hearing that we may find out Thursday or Friday what the lookback would look like, which may impact where our, what our budget looks like. So I would like the board, if they would consider maybe a mid to late afternoon meeting on Friday, the 15th of May, for adoption of the budget. So we would have a little bit of time to look if there was some change to the budget. We could make some adjustments, and I could present that again at that time.
And this would be a single-topic meeting and with Teams. So it would not involve travel on anybody's part, I don't think. But is, can we schedule that now? Can, I don't think we need a vote on it, but.
May 15th?
We can do May 15th at 5:00?
That would be fantastic.
Or four, what did I say, 5:00?
Four or five, either way, I'll be here.
Why don't we say four, because it'll take us at least 20 minutes to all get on?
Right.
Maybe we can all get in there.
Yeah, so start trying to get on at 3:45. And it'll be a very brief meeting, I believe. So that'll be
Need a motion for that?
No.
Call a special meeting.
Because there's enough, there's enough lead time. A meeting, a special meeting could be called by any member of the board with 24 hours or 48 hours notice. So you have that notice. And I hope you all can attend.
And we can discuss this at the, this part of the 15th meeting. But I, we do have to have our budget hearing on June 1st. So our budget hearing is required on June 1st. And, but we have a board meeting on June 2nd. We could do them separately, or we could move our board meeting to the first and have our hearing, our budget hearing and our board be on the same day. Or we could do it, it doesn't, but if there was, but we can talk about that on May 15th. But if we wanted to be efficient in there in having two meetings in two nights. But we can talk about that at the 15th after we adopt the budget.
So what about our meeting on May 20th? We have a meeting scheduled on May 20th. Do we cancel that? Or do we have that meeting?
No, I think we have that meeting.
We have that meeting.
Regular business.
Okay, there's regular business on May 20th. And then we can make the decision, unless you'd like to change the calendar now and make that June, change the June 2nd meeting from Wednesday, June 2nd to Tuesday, June 1st.
It was actually June 3rd originally.
Oh.
The first, no, the first wave of information told us that we had until June 2nd for the public hearing. And then today, we were told that it was incorrect and that it would have to be on June, by June 1st.
And June 1st is what, a Monday?
Monday.
So I'll make a motion to that we change the June 3rd meeting to Monday, June 1st.
So move.
Discussion?
What time will that meeting be?
Well, we'll have the
Six o'clock?
Yeah, but you have to have the budget.
We'll have the budget hearing at 5:00.
Well, we could have the budget hearing at 6:00. And we don't usually have public session until 7:00 anyway.
Right. Unless, okay, so we'll make it at 6:00. If we need an executive session, we can handle it then.
They'll send to the newspaper.
5:30?
Yes.
Okay, so public hearing will be at 5:30. Executive session will be at
I went, what we were going to do on June 2nd, it's 5:30.
Okay.
Check the paper on Sunday, make sure when legal is in there.
And on our May 20th meeting, we are, we are scheduled to have a second executive session on the superintendent evaluation. Is that right?
I haven't scheduled it yet, but we can easily do that.
When do you need all of the results?
When do you need all of the results in, I...
I'll email them.
That Monday prior to the, or unless you want the results back for the 20th. So, I'll email you tomorrow.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll send out an announcement about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us, so the next, so the board meeting, do we vote on June? We didn't vote on that change of date for the June 3rd meeting to June 1st. Can we, all in favor of that change, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Abstentions. So, the next, so that board meeting is changed to June 1st, Monday, June 1st, with a public hearing on the budget at 5:30. Consent agenda. Are there any resolutions that any board member would like to have pulled from the consent Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any questions about any item? Okay, hearing none. Call the question, all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions. Old business? Is there any old business?
Yes, Mr. Shonishe?
Yes. Mr. Michael?
Yes, I've been asked again about if I recognize Coach Kaya's with his name on the basketball court. We haven't made any decision yet, or whether we're going to proceed to do so.
We had that discussion, I think the discussion was that we'd like to hold off on that until we can have an in-person meeting for any public comment on that. Is that right?
Yeah, I would just, the, I thought process was that there was a, it was a little, little anticlimactic to do something honorary for someone in this venue. And we hope that we could, maybe we could do it at a time when we were, be able to have a larger presentation and even the actual, if we are, you know, if the board does decide to name the court, be able to have a ceremony around that when that, that's unveiled. So, we were, kind of thought this wasn't the best time to, to do that. We could have a, we would have a, you know, more ceremonial resolution, et cetera. Whereas, we're operating a little bit in a different space than usual.
I think the consensus was that we were going to go forward with it, but it was just the timing, wasn't that the case?
Yes, I believe that was, that's my recollection, that we would do it, but we would do it when we can do it a little more formally and with more fanfare.
I don't know exactly why, though, we can't do a resolution and then have a ceremonial thing later.
We could. I think it's just that, it just seems so impersonal without anyone here to speak to it, you know, without anybody in the public, at least at the meeting. But I, I'm comfortable either way, Rev. I think that either one would be appropriate.
Well, as long as we do it, that's all that counts, I think.
Well, we will do it, for sure.
You want to put forth the resolution?
No, I think we officially said that we, Dr. Pedalino had said that they would do a more formal resolution rather than just having one on the floor. So, we'll go with that.
We put that on the agenda for the next, the regular meeting on the 20th.
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, I think that, well, I know Reverend Childs, you're one person who had personal contact with him, right, during your...
You know, I go back to the ancient days.
Yes. So, I think it would be, if we had it, if we had it before, before, in the next three meetings, we could, you would have the opportunity to vote for it. So, I think that would be appropriate.
I must agree with that. We should have a resolution ready for the next meeting. At least, we let the committee know that we approve that. And as far as ceremonial, we'll be up for some other day when things go back to normal.
Right.
Be able to have a ceremony in the basketball court.
Yes. How's that sound, Dr. Pedalino?
That's fine. I can prepare a resolution for the 20th along with the file.
Any new business? So, we have B 48, Revised Notice of Public Hearing on the Budget. It's a very long resolution and it was published and, I don't think I could read it without
Well, it is available online.
It'll be on the paper, it'll be online. So, I'd like to have a resolution to, a motion to adopt Resolution B 48, Revised Notice of Public Hearing on Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Unanimously adopted. We also have Resolution B 38, which is the Revised Budget Calendar. And have a motion to adopt the Revised Budget Calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions or comment? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions unanimously adopted. BOE 69, Denial of Tenure.
Before you get on to that, I have a question. On the propositions. So, if we, we can add propositions, is that correct? Proposition 1, see to vote upon any other propositions legally proposed?
Well, I don't think, I don't think we can, we'd have to put, you have to have it before today. So, I mean, there could be, normally, there would be other propositions, but I believe you have to have, what, 45 days?
Yes. Okay, so, see, shouldn't be on there then?
It's language that's always on there.
So, that language, that's standard language.
Okay.
It's just moot at this point because of the calendar.
Yeah. And I don't think the governor's executive order changed anything about the other resolutions that might be on the ballot, just the budget. Okay, BOE 69, Denial of Tenure. May I have a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Unanimously adopted. BOE 71, Rescind B 38, Appointment of Inspectors. Since we're having, every ballot is a, is a mail-in ballot, we don't need inspectors at polling places. So, can have a resolution, BOE 71. Have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Unanimously adopted. BOE 72, Annual Meeting Chairperson. A motion to adopt that resolution? It's a new resolution for us.
So moved.
Second.
Any question or comment, discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions unanimously adopted. Every resolution, I'd like to have board approval to send a letter to New York State School Boards Association, raising concerns about the budget, the governor's executive order, changing the budget vote and annual meeting date. And the letter would contain information that we don't have adequate information regarding state aid, that school board election usually costs this district approximately thirteen thousand dollars and the 20, 21 budget vote will cost us a hundred thousand dollars. We have no guidance on what happens if the budget is voted down. The revote date would take place after our fiscal year ends. This would leave us in a situation where we are not authorized to, by our voters, to spend money. We don't know when absentee ballots are due, or we do now know that their absentee ballots are due by 5:00 on June 9th. They have to be received by, by the district, not postmarked. They have to be received by the district. How do we ensure compliance with social distancing? Well, counting votes. Will we have any level of protection against election fraud claims and election challenges? What is the definition of a qualified voter? And we have concerns about the governor's appointment to the bill, of the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to re-envision education in New York State. Education in New York State is governed by Board of Regents, the Commissioner of Education, and local school boards of education. And it is our contention that the governor does not have the authority to place the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation in the position to make plans or decisions about the future of our schools.
So moved. Eric Gerd?
Priscilla, Mrs. Lau made the, made the motion and Mr. Michael, second. And a comment?
Mrs. Shear made.
Oh, Mrs. Shear, I'm sorry. Did we get that right? Mrs. Shear and Mr. Michael. I would like to make the comment, I would like to, I would like to thank Dr. Pedalino and Mrs. Shear for initiating and composing, initiating and the, the concerns and composing the letter to Dr. Pedalino and Mrs. Shear. Thank you very much. And all in favor of that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. No abstentions, it's unanimously adopted. So, it will be in the mail. Board member announcements. Unless there's any other new business?
I have one board member announcement.
Okay. Mrs. Good?
Because I'm home watching a lot of TV, I happened upon a documentary called Lost Groundout, A Story of Urban Renewal. I was delighted to see Reverend Childs starring in it. It's really a fascinating documentary. I am not from Kingston, but being from Harhomsen, I remember Urban Renewal and when it was taking down all of the buildings along the strand. It's really a fascinating movie. I highly recommend it. And Reverend Childs really added to the flavor. And also, one of our other employees, Lynn Shabbitt and Steve were in it, talking a lot about coming from down there. So, it's really worthwhile and I really was thrilled to see the reverend.
What's done? What?
I believe it's a prime video, but it's really worthwhile, especially if you're from this area. It's fascinating. And I think it's a great, it would be a great thing to show in some classes, you know, at the high schools. It's really fascinating.
I forget the name of the filmmaker, but he's, there's, there are other films that he's made as well, right? The Lost, The Lost Groundout, I believe, is the name of the...
Have I allowed at this time to officially and formally request Reverend Childs' autograph?
You may.
It'll cost you.
Any other board member announcements?
I have a quick announcement. We, the Bailey, Bailey teachers did a drive-through on the bus runs down through Riften and throughout Kingston the other day. And it was just, it was so fun and really heartwarming. And it was great to see teachers even from a distance. And they decorated their cars and the kids were so excited. And it was really, it was a little teary, but it was, it was really lovely.
I have to say Kennedy School teachers and staff did the same thing. I went out on the porch to watch the whole thing. It was lovely. It was wonderful.
It's really, very heartwarming and, and it's a big, they've got a big area, so they split up and they, and it was really, it was great.
I think several of the schools have done that, right?
It came through our area and all the horns blown and everything. I said, see, they're celebrating my wife's birthday.
I know GW did one, I believe Chambers.
Every, every school except Kingston High School have done, has done a parade so far.
Yeah.
I saw one of them. It was teary.
I couldn't believe how teary it was.
Well, the comment I want to make is I'm really proud to live in this community and this state under these circumstances. When I go to the grocery store, everybody's wearing a mask. There's not, there's not people carrying guns around with them protesting...
New board members.
Liberate.
I'd just say, though, that people should wear their masks over their noses. Sorry to see a lot of people who only cover their mouths. So, please, cover your nose and your mouth. But I, I agree, Jim.
So...
Cut you off.
And I'm sure it will continue that way. So, if there's no other announcements, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Happy birthday to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go have a cake.
Okay.
And be safe.
Hey, well.
I wish you all, bye.
See you next week.
Yes, May 15th at 4:00, right? Or 5:00? What was it? 4:00?
4:00.
4:00, yeah.
4:00, right.
Okay, thank you all.